Cable is ready. Would like to welcome to our meeting and ask that you stand and join in the pledge with us.
Our pledge will include the flag of the United States of America and the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Durante.
I'm here.
Bolts.
Absent.
Oh yeah. Rapaport.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Sharp.
Present.
Spiezak.
Here.
Statchow.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Ann Wilson.
Here.
Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wilson and supported by Commissioner Spiezak. Roll call please.
Roll call vote to approve the October 6th minutes. Durante.
Present.
Rapaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spiezak.
Yes.
Statchow.
Present.
Williams.
Yes.
Ann Wilson. Minutes are approved.
At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that's not on our agenda you'd like to bring forward, this would be time to speak on it. I see nothing. We'll move into our first case. Our first case is a public hearing, case 2243, with proposed rezoning from OB/office business to G.A.R. Garden Apartment. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. Subject parcel here is the site of a vacant medical office building located on the north side of Palmer and to the west of Vanoy. The parcel is zoned office business and is approximately two acres in size. The property was recently purchased by the petitioner, I believe, about two and a half months ago now, who is requesting to rezone the property to G.A.R. Garden Apartment Residential in order to renovate the existing building into an apartment complex for residents 55 years or older. The renovations of turning the vacant office building into six or seven apartment units will cost approximately 200 grand and will include seal coating and crack sealing the parking lot, installing landscaping in the front yard, and constructing an outdoor seating area in this location here. The 2018 master plan indicates this future land use designation of this parcel as neighborhood commercial and office services. The property, from a land use perspective adjacent to the site, is located in an area within close proximity to residential uses, to the north, single-family residential, and a couple senior living facilities to the south, and directly to the east here, American House and Adams Senior Village. There are a variety of commercial uses located at the corner here of Palmer and Vanoy, just east of the subject property. Rezoning this parcel to multifamily and introducing six or seven apartment units for residents 55 or older should not present any negative impacts or be disruptive. As it relates to the overall development of the land today, some additional comments from the last meet-- well, let me just read the summary. So if everyone knows that this was tabled from the October 6th Planning Commission, and I'll kind of tell you why, and I'll tell people in the audience why it was, what we found out since then. The Planning Commission heard from two residents who were concerned about the proposed development. The Commission was also presented a petition signed by neighboring residents and pictures of flooding in the area, kind of spilling over to the residential area to the north. The main concern voiced by one of two residents was flooding in the general area that was blamed on a suspected drain located on adjacent property located to the east of the subject site over here. The Planning Commission deliberated and made a motion to table the item until today's meeting for purposes of investigating and finding out what's going on with this drain and the adjacent property who's responsible for cleaning it and maintaining it. Going to wrap up here. So after further review, under the direction of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department worked with the Department of Public Services and also Wayne County and confirmed that the suspected drain is, A, located on the adjacent property not commonly owned by the petitioner; B, the property is owned by an LLC, again, not commonly owned by the petitioner; C, is not in the location, is not the location of an actual drain as it was assumed to be at the last meeting; D, the suspected drain is in fact a ditch that is not suspected to service the general area from a stormwater runoff perspective and actually might service the properties itself. So I was talking to the Planning Commission earlier, the ditch actually runs all the way over here from what we understand, and there's some significant brush and fragmities, invasive species that are growing inside of it. To continue, all drains are owned by Wayne County and maintained by them. F, the flooding issues in the area are, were suspected at the time to be a result of maintenance issues resulting from a clogged county drain in the area that's approximately in this area over here under these houses. We talked to Wayne County and they inspected a portion of the drain in this area and said that it looks fine. They're going to inspect the other portion to see what's going on after some discussions with DPS. It seems like there probably is a flooding issue that's generated by this ditch, so we are going to ask the property owners to remove the brush so we can inspect what's going on in there, if it needs to be cleared, if it's going somewhere else or whatever. And at that point, we will make a recommendation to these individuals if they want to collectively join in and solve the issue, probably by grading and getting some engineering done on the site. That's what we learned about the ditch. Again, I want to stress that this is not on the subject property and not commonly owned by the petitioner today. The recommendation has not changed. The Administration and Planning Department recommend approval. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Petitioner here. Like to come forward, sir? Introduce yourself once again for the folks at home and those here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kassan Kalaf. I am the owner of the subject property. I don't have anything to add after Mohammed, and if you have any questions, let me know, please.
Okay. It is a public hearing, so we will ask anybody who wants to speak on it, and we can bring you, if they've got questions, we can bring you up.
Sure.
Anyone on my right wants to speak on this? Yes, please. Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, my name's Dawn Weber. I'm one of the property owners of the property in question. A concern that I have in addition to the water drainage issue that I addressed in the last meeting is currently, well, within the last meeting, he addressed the property usage changing and it being used more with an apartment complex. He addressed that it wouldn't be because of the volume of traffic that was going in during, while it was a doctor's office. However, that traffic occurred during business hours. So if he builds apartments there, and currently there's trees and stuff that creates a barrier for the surrounding properties that mitigates a lot of the traffic and noise, he could potentially remove that, and then consequently, that traffic is not going to be concentrated during business hours. It's going to come throughout all day and night. So our surrounding properties are going to be infiltrated with the sound and noise from this moving traffic. So I would like to also know how that's going to be addressed to mitigate any conflicts that we will have as property owners.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone on my left wish to speak? My left? Anyone on my right? Well, we can open up to, you have an answer for that, but I mean, I don't see one, but...
As I stated earlier, like, last time, the number of vehicles that are generated by the medical office, I believe there were like 64 vehicles versus not even 10 vehicles for six apartments. So I don't know how does that, like, how it's going to be like in and out. It's just like people who come live over there, park their car, sleep, and then go the second day to work. It's not like they're just going to go back and forth. So I don't understand the concept of this, of car going back and forth, and the other thing, I'm not going to planning to, I'm not planning at all to remove the landscaping in the back. It's going to stay the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll open it up to the Commission. Commissioner Wilson.
Throw the chair to the petitioner. I was the one who asked for it to be placed on hold until we found out about the drain. I found out about the drain issue, Ms. Weber. I found out about it. I think it's going to behoove you guys to get together with that other property owner on that other side to clean that ditch out so that the DPS can get in there and look at it. But, to the petitioner, you have a traffic and residential density information here? Where'd you get this information from? I mean, how did you come up with it, going from office to garden, from 27 to 56 parking places, only to 11? Are you cutting off part of the property in the back? I mean, your people, your residents aren't going to have any visitors?
Oh.
That's the only question I had, because I just thought it was kind of odd that it would drop down that much, and then your AM and PM peak time. On Palmer Road, that's a little different to, you can't bring it down to four vehicles. But, other than that, I'm going to vote yes on the rezoning because my questions were answered, and it's not the owner's property that is actually affecting yours, it's the property to the right of it, where the ditch actually sits, and it's not even a ditch. So, my questions were answered. I hope yours were, and I hope you guys work together to...
So you don't want an answer from me, or you want an answer?
Yeah, I want the answer from you.
Can I answer that just?
I'm talking to her at the same time, brother.
Can I answer that, just to be quick and concise? So I did verify those numbers. They come from the trip and parking generation manual that's developed by engineers.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rapaport.
Yes. So I noticed that there were, well, that there are a couple of additions specifically on items C and D from the, now, the last time we saw this proposal. I was wondering if the Administration would like to clarify those additions. One is, for instance, suitability of the proposed site for its current zoning, and I think the other one is the credit development strategy area.
Sure. So I think one of the Commissioners asked me about both of these and was just curious on what's going on in the overall area trend-wise as it relates to development, and honestly, not much. Nothing, actually. So that was what was noted in here, under D, I believe, and then under C. Just wanted to make a note that the property, while yes, still suitable for office use, really any sort of office, it has sat vacant for about a year, maybe over a year now, without any interest generated for an office use in this area. We tend to see the offices gravitating towards the partially vacant retail plazas along Vanoy, so I just wanted to mention that to the Planning Commission, that in my opinion, it's unlikely that this would turn back into an office use in its current blighted condition. That's it.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, what we're suggesting is that the Administration is suggesting that changing the zoning to a zoning that would actually result in this parcel actually being in use would prevent the, would be beneficial at this point, obviously, to keep the property from dwindling down into further disrepair.
Yeah, I think so. Just to point out two things from that point of view. I think rezoning it is fine, but we're rezoning it to something that's consistent with the land use to the east and the land use to the south, both of which, to my understanding, have created no negative impacts on the city and are actually fully occupied, American House and Adams Senior Village, and it's not a secret that the population throughout southeast Michigan is aging, so we're going to have to fill those rooms, we're going to have to find rooms for those aging population or residents here, otherwise they're going to move. So that's one reason I was looking at from a land use perspective, and another thing is, considering the blighted condition of this building, I think it would be financially or aesthetically better for someone to build a medical office on this parcel if there was a demand for it, as opposed to try and salvage the existing building there to the west. So that is still in play if there is an office demand there. So that was the thinking behind that as well.
Well, I have a few more comments. It's this board's responsibility to make our recommendation based on the standards that were given, and I believe that the Administration's done a fairly good job of explaining how this rezoning does actually fit into our five requirements. But, we also have a duty to speak for the citizenry, and looking at a lot of these pictures, I do remain a little bit concerned about the quality of the buildings look a little bit, they look a little bit bad, and I'd feel, I'd feel bad if my grandma moved into that building the way that it looks right now. And I guess, while I have his ear, I would encourage the developer to pay very close attention to the quality of the apartments that he'll be offering to those who we love and we cherish, and to be very, very cognizant of this community's respect for trust. But with that having been said, I have no further comment. If I'm required, I can be recalled for making the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion's in order?
I'll make that motion if you...
Very good, sir.
At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send case number 2243, proposed rezoning from OB/office business to G.A.R. Garden Apartment Residential at 33116 Palmer, west of Vanoy and north of Palmer, on behalf of Kassan Kalaf. In making this decision, we've analyzed the five standards and found there to be a compelling reason to make this rezoning.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rapaport, supported by Commissioner Wilson. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number 2243. Durante.
Yes.
Rapaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spiezak.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Ann Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck as you move forward with City Council. Our next case is also a public hearing. It is case 1952B, public hearing for proposed rezoning from R6 to CB1 on a number of parcels. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. Hopefully, this is a little quicker. The four parcels proposed for rezoning are located on the west side of Arthur, right here, between Bach and Donnelly. This is Wayne Road here. The petitioner is purchasing three of the four subject parcels, 1, 2, 3, from the Westland DDA, and owns the fourth, this one over here, and owns these three, but these are not related to this case. The petitioner also, I already said that, these three are not part of the rezoning request, as I already mentioned. The ownership makeup and zoning are detailed in your packet. I also listed a breakdown of what each individual parcel is zoned. I can go to the zoning map in a second. The petitioner is requesting this rezoning in order to construct a 4,800 square foot medical office and a 4,200 square foot retail building. There's also a conceptual site plan in your packet that I'll show you in a second. So property to the north is zoned R6, that's our single-family residential district and is developed by a single-family home. Properties to the east are also zoned R6, developed by single-family homes. To the south, CB1 and R5 on this side, there's a commercial development here, I believe it's an auto-related business. And to the west, directly adjacent to these parcels, are CB3 zoned parcels, which front Wayne and are commonly owned by the petitioner. The future land use designation for these parcels, actually for this entire block here, is neighborhood commercial and office services, so this lines up pretty nicely with that designation, the proposal that is inside your packet. Some notes about this proposal. The property is located adjacent to the parcels fronting Wayne, I'm sorry, where are we here? And you oftentimes see, not only in Westland, but along major thoroughfares, parcels immediately to the rear being developed, or at least used for commercial activities. Oftentimes, you'll see parking in the back. Sometimes you'll see an alley here, we have a residential street, so I just wanted to point that out. And if you drive along Wayne here, kind of towards the back on the residential side streets, you'll see that commercial encroaching back into the residential district. Another note I wanted to make is, the DDA purchased these parcels to help facilitate development of the area fronting Wayne, and purchased them a couple decades ago, and they have remained undeveloped since 1996 in their current R6 zoning designation. So we think that the property is actually suitable for commercial development, but would stress the importance of the site plan review process that you have the authority to oversee, so that it is carefully examined not to disrupt the residential along Arthur. And we can do that with a variety of mechanisms, I think limiting curb cuts onto Arthur, building design, how big the buildings are, what type of screening is used, and things like that will all play a factor in mitigating risks to the residential to the east. So based on these aforementioned facts, the Planning Commission, Planning Division and Administration recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayew. But it's the petitioner here. Be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter Zelos. I'm an architect, and I represent the developer, actually, who's purchasing, as a couple of physicians, husband and wife physicians. What you see on the previous site plan, which shows two different buildings, actually there's one building, I mean, the different coloration was only meant to distinguish. It could be that the entire space is used out as medical space. We're just providing the possibility that will be office space towards the back, towards the residential, and facing the road, there may be some retail, but it all could wind up being office building, medical office building, or just general office building. I'm glad to answer, I just want to make sure that there's not two different buildings, there's one building, and it's oriented in a way that a section of it is facing the road, that it's more suitable for either general office use or retail use, whereas the back section, which is closer to the residential, is going to be the medical office building. One of the physicians will establish her office in that portion of the building.
Will there be connection between the two buildings? Will they have their own common wall?
Well, yes and no. It's one building. How it gets divided depends on what the demand for space is going to be. So it could be that the entire building is used by one tenant. I would say that that's not likely, because the physician who's developing this has her own office going in towards the back of the building. So yes, there could be one medical building in the back, and the rest of it can be one large office building for somebody else. So the connection is just, this is just one big building. It'll be divided up based on the actual use of it, the actual demand for lease space.
Okay. Very good. This is a public hearing. We'll see if anyone wants to speak, and if there are any questions, we'll bring you back up.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody on my left wish to speak on this? Well, we'll open it up to the Commission. Commissioner Wilson.
Throw the chair to the petitioner. You said there's a possibility this will be split into two separate buildings, correct? Or two separate uses? And you have, you already have a doctor that's going to put her office into this back?
This is being built for the doctor.
Okay.
She doesn't need that much space. So she will take what she needs. The rest of it is available, and whatever the demand is, you know, we'll put a sign up, and if it's all medical office, it'll be medical office. If it's medical office and general office, it'll be that. They prefer to have office rather than retail. But, you know, which, all I'm saying is that, was my advice to them is, okay, you're building 8,000 square feet, or thereabouts. What if you only have demand for 4,000 office, and you got somebody comes in and says, I want to do a retail store, cafe or something?
Okay. With that answer there, throw the chair to Moe. If this alters in any way, or the tenants alter in any way, do they come back in front of us?
So this is a rezoning to, what was it? I'm sorry. CB1?
Right.
So, I mean, as you know, you're approving all of the uses in the CB1 district.
So irregardless, whatever they choose to put in there?
Yes.
Whatever the use is going to be consistent with the zoning we're asking for.
Yeah. So I want to stress that point, because you could rezone it, this person could not go through with the medical office, and something else can go in there, potentially in administrative use, and you might not even know about it until I approve of it and you see it up. But, we have been in communication for almost a year, and there is a husband and wife that are relocating out of that. There's also some contingencies and some language in the deed from the DDA parcels that we're turning over to them, that this space be used for medical. So we're protected on that end, but as of the zoning change, you know that that could open it up to a variety of things.
Okay. So, then my last question is, we will get to see whenever this happens in a site plan?
Yes. Next month?
I can't say that for sure, because I need to get a survey, and right now, you know, getting a survey is just, you know, just like anything else, it's all messed up. So I would have liked to have that happening today, too.
Sure. Okay.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Rapaport.
Yes. To the Administration, the properties along Wayne Road between Ford Road and Marquette there, I note that driving down that area, as I do very often, we have church, we have a sign shop, there's a, there's a gas station, a service station along those lines. Like, I guess my question is, what exactly does the R6 zoning cover? And the other properties along those, along the Wayne Road corridor between Ford Road and Marquette, do they tend, do they trend more towards the R6 zoning, or do they trend more towards the CB1 zoning?
Sure. So, I want to back up, because in my introduction, I didn't really tell you what these properties were being rezoned to. So here we have CB3, CB3, CB3. This is split zoned down this imaginary line here, CB3 here, and then this, DDA, DDA, DDA is R6, and then this half approximately is R6 as well. So these are being proposed to be rezoned to CB1, the lowest intense commercial district. R6 is a single-family residential, so it allows only for that, and similar to a single-family home, no multifamily or anything like that. You can get religious facilities and schools of special land uses before you. And the properties that front Wayne are a variety of zoning, primarily CB3. And as I was trying to explain, I don't know if I did a good job of doing that, but they tend to go... but they tend to go back deeper than this location here. They tend to go back even deeper than here, too. Sometimes all the way back here to accommodate parking, larger businesses, setbacks, required burns in landscaping, and things like that. That answers your question?
It does sort of. I wanted to make sure that I understood. Under item C, you did say, you do use the word impossible, the phrase impossible to comply.
With what the petitioner wants to do.
Okay. The standard under C is the suitability of the property in question to be used for its current zone. Current zone is obviously set aside for residential, not for commercial business.
Right.
Has the property there been used for residential property? And is it still reasonably suitable?
So the word impossible, there's sort of some reasoning behind that. This property has been held by the DDA since 1996.
That's a long time.
Yes. We purchased property to help facilitate commercial development. So we're unlikely to flip it to someone that wants to build residential, especially since we have arranged three collective lots directly adjacent to each other. Classic DDA role in trying to facilitate commercial development. With that, we haven't, in my time here, I haven't heard anyone wanting to use these properties for residential development either. Impossible might be a little bit of a stretch, but that's the background.
All right. The only other real concern that I have, maybe could be addressed by the developer, or perhaps the, perhaps the administration knows. This proposed medical center, medical building, is awfully nearby the local high school. Is there, is there any concern about how this will be used as a medical center? That there might be some, I don't know, kids get into all sorts of trouble.
Yeah, so medical office is flexible, and it's permitted in our office business district. So it's also permitted in all of the commercial districts as well, by administrative approval. This, we understand it to be, I don't know the medical terminology. Could you actually tell us one more time? But I believe it has something to do with bones, maybe, or?
It's basically a doctor's office. She's a rheumatologist, so it's not really, some of you consider it a medical center. It's not a medical center. It's a doctor's office. You know, she's a rheumatism doctor, so if you got problems with rheumatism, arthritis, you see her, that's it.
So not a, not a saw and nail phone doctor, but a soft tissue doctor?
This is a, just, that's a doctor's office, and her specialty is rheumatism.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, concerns? Motion's in order. Commissioner Wilson.
I make a motion to send case number 1952B. No, I make a motion to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send case number 1952B to the City Council with a recommendation of approval for a zoning change.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wilson, supported by Commissioner Williams. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to approve the rezoning, case number 1952B. Durante?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards? Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Statchow? Williams?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to our next case, which is also a public hearing. It's case 2244, public hearing for proposed.
I just want to say thank you very much.
To add a drive-through operation for Lefty's Sub Shop. Mr. Ayew.
All right. Subject property here is located at the southeast corner of Warren and Wayne, just a little bit south of that corner. The property is approximately 1.15 acres and is zoned CB3, general commercial. The site contains an existing building owned by the petitioner and occupied by Men's Warehouse, GameStop, Massage Green, and a newly opened Lefty's Cheese Steak Restaurant. The petitioner is requesting to construct a drive-through operation on the north side of the building for the Lefty's Restaurant, primarily to help the new restaurant get through the pandemic. The restaurant will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. Just a little bit of background, this was CB3, so it's administrative approval for a restaurant. We approved this a couple months, maybe a few months ago. And they recently opened up, did a soft opening, are currently open for business. I've met with the owner several times. He was going to, supposed to be here tonight. He called us maybe a few days ago. He's sick in the hospital. So his daughter and another representative are here. If you want to ask them questions when I'm done with this, real quick. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing site that will impact points of ingress and egress. So remaining with that one curb cut accessed off of Wayne Road. The addition of the drive-through operation to the existing site is expected, obviously, to generate new traffic during lunch and dinnertime hours, but not a significant amount of traffic that the site can't handle. The drive-through operation is not expected to become disruptive to the existing uses or cause any negative traffic impacts on Wayne Road. A big reason for kind of why we gave this drive-through an easier time, because a lot of the spillover effects, if any, are caused. First of all, they have a great deal of stacking. But if any issues are generated, it'll be contained within the site, and they won't spill out onto Wayne Road, just because of the amount of stacking that they potentially have here. So the proposal provides 10 stacking spaces and 48 parking spaces in accordance with zoning regulation. The area known as the Shop and Dine District is developed with a variety of commercial uses, retail and restaurants. There's a bunch of drive-throughs in the area. Some are Taco Bell, it says Taco Bello in here, Dairy Dan just to the south, McDonald's, Chicken Shack, Little Caesar's, and Sonic near the ball there to the north. The 2018 master plan designation for this is community commercial. This use is consistent with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have some drawings in here that I'd like to show you, but the administration is recommending approval. This is a close-up, so people will enter. One-way will be established, going this way, order station, approximately the pickup window, and then people will leave. There is sufficient room here to make a maneuvering move around of a car that's parked. There is, as Commissioner Wilson was asking, an opportunity here to connect this with the Tim Hortons. The owner was made aware of that and is seeking that opportunity. Some of you also may not know this, but I think at least one of, well, now Lefty's two, so two of these businesses, maybe more, I'm not sure, are also owned by Ali. Two. And let's see, what else I got? Here's the site plan, kind of a drawing of it, exactly what I mentioned to you. There's some removal of parking spaces back here to accommodate the traffic flow and a significant amount of stacking spaces. That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you. Would you ladies like to come up and introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Erica Mallett. I'm Ali's daughter, and this is Chelsea Bender. She's our.
Marketing.
Marketing.
Marketing and creative director. So I work very closely with him when it comes to designing all of our stores.
All right. Anything you wish to add?
I would just like to add that with the pandemic, having a drive-through would be very, very helpful. It's more contactless, and you aren't as close to the consumer, even given like the distance with like your acrylic stuff and things like that. So it would be very helpful.
The one thing I would like to add to is, a majority of our customers come in, order, take their food, and go. And with the pandemic, obviously, we don't have people sitting and eating. So the drive-through will make that process smoother, faster, and safer for everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to our commission.
Question?
Commissioner Durante.
Yeah, I have a question. I've been around this building several times. And this driveway that is now going in to the back parking lot, and you're going to turn that around so it's coming out of the back parking lot. But from what I've seen and been there many times, there's not enough room for two cars on that strip.
So I, me and my dad actually tried to put both of our cars through there, and it worked. I mean, we don't have a large car, we don't have trucks, but it wasn't as small as.
Are they going to widen that driveway?
I, we don't have plans for it right now, but I don't think we would be opposed to it.
So currently, there's 17 feet in between the building and the curb. I do believe there would be space to widen it if we must. The average car is about seven feet, in our research. So we considered that we would have enough room. And like she said, they tested it out, too.
That's if the people that are coming to your driveway are right next to the building. If they, if they're a little ways away from the building, you got, they're not going to have room to drive, somebody else is not going to have room to drive by them. That's my concern there.
Going to tell you how wide that driveway is right now.
Huh?
Going to tell you how wide the driveway is right now. 26 feet.
That driveway's 26 feet?
Showing you right here on the screen.
No, not that driveway. I'm talking about the alongside the building.
Oh, okay.
Alongside the building, the drive alongside the building. That.
About 17, 18 feet. You could fit two vehicles there. It would be tight, but.
Through the chair.
Okay.
Were you finished with your comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm in agreement with this, the whole drive-through window. Mo, I have to retract my statement about having it go through the back at. Tim Hortons, because then they have to change their whole configuration around, coming in, go this way. But I do have a problem. Is there enough room and enough radius for a fire truck to bend around this corner and go up the side? That's my, that's, that was the main thing that I wanted to ask, because there's nothing in our packet from the fire department.
No, I.
Saying that it had been looked at.
So I always send, as you know, to the fire department, engineering, assessing all of the departments, these proposals that I get. And I request that they respond within seven business days, or 10 business days. I did not get anything from the fire department.
And that's, that's the one issue I have. The fire truck coming in off of Wayne Road, making that hard turn to the right or to the left, coming around the corner, coming around the back, and then trying to get out of that 17-foot space in that turn. I don't, I think that needs to be looked at.
It's an existing building, so there's no building modification going on.
And I understand that, but this may have been placed there before anybody even thought about the length of our fire trucks. Our fire trucks are longer now than they were back when this building was built. So personally, I'd jump out of the back and go down Tim Hortons. That would be the thing for me.
Yeah, I do know that a lot of our rules and laws and ordinances, we can't retroactively enforce. So even if there was a fire department issue there, they would not ask the business owner to tear down a portion of the building.
Not so much the building as it is that little boulevard in between. But that was my, that was my question and my issue.
Commissioner Spezak.
Yes. I'm ready to make a motion.
I have a call.
Unless you are.
May I?
You may.
Thank you.
While I have the floor, I, I'm generally in support of this. I guess I have a few, one comment as far as along Commissioner Wilson's lines, because I have frequented this, this particular facility before, and I've encountered some difficulty navigating it. And I wanted to make sure that you're aware of a customer's concern. But also, I guess, just mostly curious, curiosity. It's a sub-shop, or I heard somebody say cheesesteaks?
It's cheesesteaks and hoagies. It's a bunch of fried food.
So when we say cheesesteaks, are we, are we, are we talking legitimate Philadelphia cheesesteaks?
Yes.
We've been to Philadelphia, and we know?
The owner has, yes.
Oh.
Yes. The owner of the franchise, and please come in and try it.
Now for the serious portion of my occupation of the discussion floor. So when traffic comes in to this particular facility, and you've, you're clearly directing them along the front, front face of the building, around the outside edge to the, to the side of the men's warehouse, where there is honestly a narrow passage that's, that's.
That's what I said.
One car length wide. There is no way two cars are getting through there. That's not really my, my concern. My concern is the positioning of the parking space at the very far edge of the men's warehouse, right in front of the men's warehouse, which makes it very difficult to make that turn without feeling like you're going to clip that, a car, if a car is parked there. That could possibly be alleviated if the two parking places in front were eliminated, giving a, giving the ability for a car to swing wide to make that turn. But otherwise, that turn is quite sharp, and it might impede your, your success in that particular location and/or cause, cause property damage if somebody comes in and they're more eager to get a delicious cheesesteak, Philly cheesesteak, than they are being safe.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I definitely think that's something we can accommodate for, eliminating those spots, making it no parking.
But I definitely did want to, well, call your attention to that concern and make sure that you, well, that you actually had a chance to, well, to address it, if, if it is a thing that you would like to address. But it does not actually keep me from wanting to support this petition. And with that, I will cede the floor to my good friend.
And that recommendation to block off that last spot could be part of the recommendation to go to City Council.
Well, I'll, I'll leave that to the motion maker.
That that last spot not be utilized as parking.
With that, I'll cede the floor to Commissioner Spezak.
Uh-oh. All right. I move to close the public hearing, send case 2244 forward to the City Council with a recommendation for approval based on the fact that the ladies attempt to get that last parking place in front of Men's Warehouse closed down, so they can get around there. Looks like they got plenty of room.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Spezak, supported by Commissioner Williams. Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Roll call vote to approve case number 2244. Durante?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item for consideration is the resolution for posting a notice of a schedule of regular meetings for the Planning Commission for the year 2021. Motion by Commissioner Wilson and supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call.
Sorry, who's that, that supported, Chairman? Wilson.
I made the motion. Richards made the support.
Court. Okay. Roll call vote to approve the 2021 regular meeting schedule as presented. Durante?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Statchow? Williams?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Schedule for 2021's been adopted.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ayew, would you have anything else?
I don't. Happy Thanksgiving and all of the other holidays for everyone else celebrating something else. Thank you.
Motion's in order to adjourn.
Sam did.
Sam? Durante, motion by Durante, supported by...
Me, Spezak.
Supported by Commissioner Spezak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.